Oh, yeah, either way. Yep, it's just Ruth Ann.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We will call together a regular meeting of the school committee. This is our January thirteenth regular meeting. We will start as we do every night now with the Pledge of Allegiance led by one of our students. And this one, I don't even need a principal introduction for, as I've known Loe Thorne Dykes since she was three years old at Second Church and all the way through Pierce. And I mean, she is just one of those great kids, smart and energetic and funny. And I had the opportunity to coach her a couple of years in kindergarten soccer, good athlete, and just has been a great, great friend to my son Colt over the years. So, Loe, thank you for coming to lead us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, there's no obligation for anyone to participate, but for those who are willing and able, please rise for the pledge. And Loe, the floor is all yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Loe. All right. Meeting's all downhill from here. Let's go to our public comment period. It looks like we just have two folks who are present to give public comment. Lisa, is there anyone? No virtual. Okay, so two folks in the room. You have three minutes to provide your public comment. Please provide your name and address when beginning. Emily will give you a thirty second warning after two and a half minutes. And our first speaker is Heather Tausig. Yes, please come up to them.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. My name is Heather Tausig. I live at one twenty Garland Road in Newton. Both my daughters went through Newton Public Schools. I live surrounded by a lot of Newton Public School kids. And I'm also a member of Grassroots for Gun Violence Prevention, which is a state organization, as well as a co-founder of the Newton Gun Violence Prevention Collaborative. So, as some of you may know, I've been in dialogue with Newton Public Schools since 2019 about gun safety education. And I'm back in front of you tonight to encourage you to make a commitment to inform parents about the risks of unsecure firearm storage. Adopting a secure storage notification resolution would reflect the district's commitment to help prevent the tragedies that can occur when unsupervised children and teens gain access to unsecured loaded firearms. There's three important statistics I always like to share when talking about this. Over fifty percent of gun-owning households do not lock their firearms securely. Seventy-six percent, so three-quarters of school shooters under the age of gun, under the age of eighteen, access the guns from their own home or from a home that they know. And over eighty percent of minors who die by firearm suicide access the gun from their own home or from a family member. There are over three thousand gun licenses in Newton. This is not something that can't happen here. So, in the interest of preventing firearm injuries and deaths of childrens and teens, our goal is to normalize the conversation around gun safety, to include secure firearm storage with all the other topics that are important to schools, including internet use, drugs, alcohol, vaping, suicide awareness, mental health, fire safety, et cetera. Raising awareness about secure firearm storage is an evidence-based solution to prevent school shootings and other tragedies. And to date, seventeen Massachusetts school districts have passed similar resolutions for their districts. Just a few months ago, the Mass Association for School Committees passed a statewide resolution recommending that all school committees urge their school districts to create an appropriate communication to parents and guardians, explaining the importance of secure firearm storage. Secure storage practices are also promoted by the American Academy of Pediatrics and the National PTA. I wanted to also let you know that last year, the White House released an executive order and the U.S. Department of Education provided a customizable letter template for school districts. I know that in 2023, we worked closely with NPS and the Department of Health and Human Services on a social media campaign. We put out a lot of messaging about.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. And a lot of that information went out to parents and families. However, if you look on the NPS school website now, you can't find any of that information. It's not something that's sort of a regular part of things going on. So, I think a resolution passed by the school committee, especially a binding one, would set policy for the school districts now and into the future. I urge you to move forward with the plan for creating a secure storage resolution and show Newton to be the leader that we all know it to be. Our organizations are happy to help, and I'm going to submit these in writing with the resolutions as well that I referenced.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. You can hand those to Lisa, and they will be part of the public record. Okay, thank you. All right, our next speaker is Enrique Rosero.
Good evening. I just came here to give a shout out and encouragement for people to participate in the strategic planning. I had the privilege to observe the strategic planning session with the school committee members and come to the first session for listening for the parents and families. And I think our input is very important. I know that today, the Panorama Survey went out, and I hope people can participate. And just as a note, when I participated observing the school committee giving feedback, the word six representative Paul Levy was remote, and it was kind of laughable to see a speaker on a laptop trying to participate of a session in which is highly participative, and you have to read the room, and you have to see what people say and what they don't say as well. Paul Levy is also not here today. If we had a policy or truancy and absentism, probably he will be chronically absent, and if we had a media cover these issues, it will be noticeable, newsworthy at least. So, to summarize, please participate. Everyone listening, Panorama Survey is out, and there is a listening session, I think, this Wednesday as well. So, please give your input. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment period for tonight, and we will move to our superintendent's report.
Welcome back, everyone. Welcome to 2025, and I'm going to just amplify what Mr. Rosario just said in my update. Well, first, I'll say that cold weather is in full swing, and I just want to remind folks that even if your young person tells you they're too cool for coats and boots and mittens and hats, they aren't. And we had a lot of teachers like looking for dry clothes today and those types of things. So, just remember, you do need to send those things with your young people, and it is cold out there. We do follow the state guidelines and don't send kids out. So, last week was too cold to go outside, but this week it is warm enough to go outside, but it's wet. So, please make sure you have snow pants and things like that. If you don't have those items, please reach out to our office, and we'll connect you with some folks in Family Engagement that can help with those materials. But second, about strategic planning, I just wanted the committee to have the full list of everyone who has said they will participate in the formal Strategic Planning Committee. So, you have that with a little key about who they are within the community. We will be using our Portrait of Learner Competencies in order to combine with the survey data for, that was just mentioned by Mr. Rosario, for families which will go out this week. We also have a staff culture survey, which we have shared with our NTA partners in advance. It's data that all of us want to know about what it's like to work in the Newton Public Schools. And we also have a secondary school student survey going out to our high school students, asking about their experiences as well. The survey topics are about all aspects of school management, governance, experience, safety, leadership, instruction, technology. We're asking questions about how much parents supplement our school program with outside enrichment. We're really trying to understand our place within the community and our impact. So, just to echo what our public speaker said, we really want you to take these surveys. They're translated into every language that our families speak, and we hope that you'll give us a little time to share your ideas with us. If you're better live, you can join us on the fifteenth for a focus group session, and you can just share freely in a give and take what you would like us to know about strengths, weaknesses, and ideas with the strategic planning consultants. So, just so everyone knows, we have consultants so that you get an unvarnished, like other set of eyes on the data that's coming forward, and they facilitate the process with our community. So, they'll be with us for six more sessions after this, where the Strategic Planning Committee will look at the survey data, our achievement data, and any other relevant information to create a three-to-five-year plan for the district. So, thanks to those who are participating, and we look forward to seeing folks on the fifteenth and reading your survey data. I do want the school committee to know that, as you know, under our human resources goals for the last two years, we've been in development with various higher ed institutions to both promote leadership and promote teachers within the district, particularly pinpointing teachers of color and leaders of color. And our first two candidates from NPS presented their capstone presentations on Saturday, and I attended as a member of their capstone committee. Gabrielle Mulrain from Mason Rice and Kari Rulak from North High School presented and are on their way to their principal licensure as a result of this program through Newton Public Schools. Congratulations to both of them, and our school system is certainly enriched by their leadership. Our collaboration with our Teachers Association is very healthy and robust in the new year. As you may recall, through part of our settled educator contracts, we had several working groups that had to be accomplished. They are all in full swing except for one. I've listed them here. Mental Health Working Group, the Elementary School Day Working Group, and High School Staff and Professional Development Working Group. The following working group will be beginning in the spring, and that is a Unit C working group to address coverage and staffing issues, staff pipelines, and working conditions for that unit. The only reason it's delayed is that we are working on so many other committees. We need, we just need a little space to get that moving. And then, under curriculum and instruction, I want the committee to know that the Joint Curriculum Council of both high schools is engaged in addressing the concerns that have been raised in this forum regarding mathematics and leveling. The math audit committee is also reading through a first draft of its audit report and eliciting feedback from constituents. Dr. Flanagan, Dr. Roundtree, and I will be working with high school staff in greater numbers to have meetings across the next two weeks to specifically hear from every teacher who teaches multi-level classes and to observe those classes in action. Let's just say that on all sides of this discussion, there's folks who feel that their voice has not been represented in the public dialogue, and we're seeking to gain as much feedback as possible. Both schools are discussing curriculum implementation, rigor, assessment design, and curriculum implementation, all of these items which must be addressed before we can revise leveling practices, and we're moving with speed but deliberateness. I also want to know in a much sort of quieter way, the health and wellness audit is ongoing, and so we are articulating to the new DESI standards, and that is a K to twelve committee as well. They, there are some additions in the new frameworks, but our curriculum is well-articulated there. We're just making sure that we go through the same process with every subject area. The district's new disability awareness curriculum that we shared last spring and talked about this fall in the Office of Student Services update is being implemented across all elementary schools, and feedback is being solicited with an eye towards revisions for any subsequent years. It's been a busy couple of weeks. Elementary searches for our principals. We have three open elementary principalships, three individuals retiring, and we knew last year they were slated to retire this year. So, Dr. Santa, Dr. Farag, and I have screened all the applicants in the elementary principal pool, so a brief meeting with all of the qualified candidates. And we brought forward eleven candidates for the first search of, for the Memorial Spalding principal search. Finalists will be selected shortly, and then they will visit Memorial Spalding for a full day each with meetings with staff, central office, and then the superintendent. They will also visit students and classes, and they'll have an opportunity to interact with every part of the Memorial Spalding community. There'll be a parent forum in the evening after all three of the candidates have visited at Memorial Spalding, and parents will be able to ask questions and to hear from the candidates live. Staff may also attend. The same process will be followed in subsequent weeks for the Zerbis and Burr searches. And I have to say, we are flush with qualified, diverse candidates, and I've never seen such a large pool. And there's like four more every day of people who continue to apply. So, feeling really good about those candidates. We do have an upcoming listening session requested by our Chinese-American families here in Newton to hear their unique experiences in the system, and that will occur on January twenty-second here at the Ed Center downstairs in one eleven. A brief form was sent to families to RSVP, but also allow them to share privately some of their experiences and what they would like to talk about so that our facilitators can share that publicly without any particular parent feeling on the line during those meetings. NPS facilitators will aggregate all the topics and sharing, and then share it with the group at large. We did have a meeting like this with some of our Palestinian families about a year or so ago, and found it to be a very successful meeting. This group, the school committee, the PTO and city councilors are visiting at this time of year. PTO has always sponsored school committee with the superintendent at PTO meetings, and these are all, these are scheduled for every single school. And schools that did not have a visit from our city council partners last year, I've invited them to join us for those schools. We often talk with the community, share feedback and ideas, and then we visit classrooms depending on what's going on in the day. So, we'll look forward to seeing any of you at your particular homeschool, should you be able to join us. I want the community to know that the website is being revised en masse, but is being done so in phases. So, we heard tonight that something that used to be there may not be there, so I'll check into that. Our webmaster is working in partnership with the Office of Family Engagement to revamp and clean up the website. I sent the committee a sample website to design your particular page. I would welcome your feedback. We are also working on an app for people's mobile phones because families are telling us increasingly they are doing all of their business and reading about us on their phones. So, that's in process. Revisions have been made based on listening sessions we held last spring and also the complaints that come through the website email, and there are many. So, we're working on it. And then, lastly, Mr. Hurley and I have now met with every single department and every principal or group of principals in their feeder patterns to gain their feedback on the budgeting process. This is the first time that we have met with every single constituent on the school side who has a budget in order to elicit their feedback. And now, we are in the process of drafting a first-look budget for your consideration. Prioritizing asks and revisions is our main focus this month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nolan. Is there any questions from the committee members other than how to get a teenager to wear a coat? Rajiv, was that your question?
Yes.
All right.
Other, I think fairly quick ones. Dr. Nolan, in terms of the principal searches, are we, are we approaching it with the idea of having a single pool of candidates and then hiring the three best ones? Or is it a different pool for each of the schools?
So, some of the candidates did not want to be in the pool for all three. So, we've, we've tried to bring forward as many of the same candidates for all three searches, mostly because we have strong feelings about the strength of those candidates, but also not wanting any of the schools to feel like, well, I got this search as leftovers. So, we are, we are, we think we've devised a process that allows the match to be made between the school community and the strong candidate. And, and so, we think we have pulled a pool that has, has that capacity. And they are generally interviewing for two or three of the positions.
Great, because it sounds like we have an excellent pool, and finding the three best out of those would be great.
It's pretty exciting, actually.
And then, just one other question regarding the, the listening session with Chinese-American families. How did we come up with an email outreach list? Because I didn't think we tracked that level of ethnicity. And, and I know previously we've had challenges just before I was on the school committee, sending, getting any communication out to say every kid on an IEP was incredibly difficult, or so we were told. So, I wasn't sure how we got to.
We're not sending out individual emails. We sent it to everyone. So, for instance, you received the same email with the same link. So, everyone.
If you self-identified as a Chinese-American.
Correct, correct. There was a strong set of parents who asked us over and over for the listening session. And just based on some of the issues that were coming up within some of our schools, it resonated for us that we needed to get more information. So, but we sent it to everyone, and anyone who identifies as a Chinese family may participate in those activities.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Tamika?
Just a quick follow-up regarding the Chinese-American listening session. How are we ensuring that everyone who wants to participate can participate? Is there a remote function or a remote capability, or how are you handling that?
I can't remember if we decided not to do it remotely. I'll have to, I'll have to get back to you on that. We went round and round about how to do that. I think what we're, we were also concerned about translation and making sure that we had Chinese-language speakers that would be available, and how would that work? And so, those things are, we're still kind of debating what, what the best piece is. I think it's sort of, would be helpful to us if families shared those things. That's one of the questions in the, in the questionnaire, is do you need any special accommodations so that we can understand how we might run the session best? We didn't get any, any RSVPs over the weekend, which it's the first time we published it. But it was just a plea to the community. It would be really helpful for us to, to get feedback from you about what you need to participate. I know Anping and I did a listening session a few, a month or so, two months ago, and it was really helpful to have someone there to translate, and you know, so we don't want anybody to be unable to participate.
Anping?
I appreciate that both of you asked these questions, and I think the probably online communication and option will be, will be welcome, considering the weather. If it's a bad weather, you know, rain or snowing, and, and many young families have their kids at home. So, you know, I had my personal experience with those families, so that would be nice. But I also appreciate that you provide the bilingual translation if possible. I think that's also very important, because many new immigrant families, they happen to have probably the most questions to ask, and they're eager to learn the school system or their kids had some challenges. So, overall, I really appreciate a public school like Newton reach out to the, to this special group, the Chinese-American families. And I understand other groups might have similar concerns, but it's wonderful to show our, you know, passion and the concern to listen to those parents directly. I would encourage a little bit to reach out a little bit more, because I know sometimes, because language, culture, reasons, sometimes they're, they're learned through their, you know, mouth words and not necessarily look at the public official announcement. So, LPAC will be wonderful organization. I think probably have already done something. And then, the Chinese Language School here and other organization, if we have a kind of a translated version already, I know that we have the system, automatic translation. But if you have some kind of PDF version, then I could help too. But LPAC folks, they, they probably will be more eager to, to help with spreading the word. Thank you again for this effort.
Yeah, thank you. And Ping, any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Dr. Nolan. Let's move to our consent agenda. We have two items. We have a approval of a overnight out-of-state field trip to Washington, D.C. And then, our meeting minutes from December sixteenth. Is there anything a member would like to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion?
To pull the field trip?
Okay. Anything else? All right. Well, then, let's, is our motion to approve just the meeting minutes as our only item?
I motioned that we approve the meeting minutes.
Okay, moved by Rajiv, second by Anping. Let's take a vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two is yes. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six? Is absent. Ward seven is vacant. Ward eight?
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller?
Yes.
Okay. Meeting minutes for December sixteenth are approved. And let's go to the field trip memo. Tamika?
So, this is a, essentially, just a question of what is it? We have the scantest details here, and I know it's pretty rote, our approval process. Having passed through the principal's approval, the superintendent's approval, and coming to us for, yeah, essentially, the final say, but there, there are just no details here besides the date.
Lisa, do you have the spreadsheet handy?
Curious.
Yeah.
Yes, I noticed.
Isn't it the annual Washington, D.C. trip with, they visit the Capitol, they visit the?
This is only nine, nine students. Yeah. No, it's not. We.
The fact that we're wondering is.
Yeah, we haven't done that trip in a little while. I.
Yes.
Yeah.
I only know that one because my kid, I went through it when he was a child, so.
One.
Yeah.
Model UN. Gotcha. Okay.
I am set.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the field trip memo to Washington, D.C.?
So moved.
Moved by Tamika. Is there a second?
Second, but I just want to say that just make sure, Lisa, that that's updated in the minute, minute minutes.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two is yes. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six absent. Ward seven vacant. Ward eight?
Yes.
And ward nine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. That is approved. And we can move on to our items for discussion. Before we do that, let me quick recognize Victor, one of our students who, student representatives who's here tonight. Always value your input, of course. First item, our fee increase recommendation. This was tabled from our December sixteenth meeting. Good evening, Liam.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all. So, you have a memo. This is a second read on the fees discussion that we had. And at the last meeting, I believe it was actually at the MEKO headquarters office, feels like a long time ago, and was asked to look at the use of school building rates in particular. So, we've got a detailed memo here. So we've got a detailed memo here, um, outlining kind of our standard fees. I'm happy to go through that, but I think the one that I wanted to spend the time is really just kind of what we, um, I spent quite a bit of time with, uh, with Mr. David Stickney, looking at our use of school building rates. And I just wanted to walk you through kind of the three main changes on that, if that's okay. So the three major changes, I think we had actually brought this to you before. Our first one was to our after-school providers. Uh, they pay at a, a rate, that's a per student hour rate. Currently, uh, they are at forty cents per student hour. And you've got some, some graphs here in terms of what we've been collecting, uh, in terms of the revenue. We have been averaging about three hundred and, um, two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is our three-year average. And we're recommending that that student per hour rate go from forty cents per student hour to fifty cents. Uh, the last time we've did, we did that was actually in 2017. So we think this is long past due. So that's the first rate increase that we were going to recommend to you. The second, the second one is a rate increase in kind of a simplification model, uh, of our, of our room fees. We have a, a variety of different room rates depending on the school and we tried to simplify that for the B and C. If it's an elementary classroom, what that rate would be, what the current rate is. And there's a, is a kind of a variety of rates and what the proposed rates, uh, would be. So there's, there's two benefits for us. One, we've got the, this, a simplifying the rates. Elementary, middle and high schools would have those same rates, but right now they're even more varied from that depending on the school. And we wanted to basically, um, have kind of a unified rate, um, on that. So, and then we're increasing those rates. So that brings in some additional hours. Now, those rates do change depending on how many hours you're in those space between one and four hours or, or more than four hours, uh, as well. So that has the benefit of getting, um, some additional room fee revenue for us, uh, which is, which is really helpful for us. Again, all this money goes in what's called our use of school building revenue. Uh, that revenue basically, uh, essentially offsets our custodial overtime charges. So has a, has a, has a good benefit for us to, to come in there. And then the last change, which is, uh, a little bit of a, a little bit of a different, uh, piece. We have, um, several language schools that, um, that come into our, particularly into our middle schools. And back into, and actually I worked on this in 2017. We worked on a gradual kind of rate increase. They occupy during the Saturdays or Sundays and they take up some buildings more than others. And they certainly are free to take less or more space and we would, we would devise that. Those schools were certainly hard, a hard hit during the pandemic. They were not charged. And then many, many of them didn't, obviously certainly didn't occupy the buildings and were slow to come back. So what we're proposing to do with these language schools is on the B some, uh, B rates is to do similar, what we had done similarly in 2017 over a five-year period. Uh, this would be close to thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars per language school. So about ten thousand, uh, almost eleven thousand dollars total, uh, for these schools. Kind of slowly bringing them up. So for example, the Newton Chinese Language School, uh, would go up to forty-six thousand dollars. Uh, and again, these are just the, um, the room rates. It's not the custodial hours that we're talking about. So we're charged, we charge people for the custodial hours and a custodial hourly rate. This is the room rate that we're talking about. And so we're trying to align that rate with our B permit rates that we're asking for right now. So we try to align that to make this not all such a big hit at one time, uh, and, and spread that over a five-year period. In total, um, near the, near the end, the, the, the benefit of these, uh, USB rate changes is almost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we've got the, the change in the room fees, the change in the language schools at ten thousand dollars each year. And then the after-schools as well at about sixty-two thousand dollars. So, um, that coupled with the fee recommendations, which to, uh, our standard set of fees, is some, you know, is, is, and then added to our preschool revenue, you folks have already approved, is almost upwards of five hundred thousand dollars of new revenue that NPS can be looking at to, to use as an offset in the FY26 budget. I'm happy to go through anything more detailed. Again, we are, um, very adamant about financial support. We've got some statistics in here. Ninety-nine percent of, of financial waivers are accepted. Uh, we do, uh, consider special circumstances. So we certainly want anybody to, um, participate or be involved. Uh, and really do not want any financial, uh, matter to be a hindrance for us. So with that, I can, I can open that, uh, open that to the school committee.
Okay. Thank you, Liam. Questions from members for Mr. Hurley? Yes, Rajiv.
Hey, Liam. Heard you were expecting something from me. So couple of questions on this one. Um, so first starting with the recommendation, um, for after-school providers.
Yes.
It, it seems like we have a very kind of odd history of increases. So in 2006, uh, an increase of over a hundred percent. Subsequent one, uh, of twelve percent. One after that of six percent. So certainly a, a big range. Um, and, and one, so two, two specific questions on this one. Is the, you, you have the, the, uh, the possibility of inc- of doing half the increase this year? Or, or doing the full twenty-five percent? What's the feedback, if any, from the after-school providers about what would be easier to implement?
So good question, uh, Rajiv. Um, I have not spoken directly. David Stickney, I think, has spoken to some of them. And I think certainly all these vendors are, you know, uh, you know, price sensitive. This is, they're running a business for, uh, you know, from their own perspective. So I think, you know, quite simply from their perspective, certainly any, you know, no rate to a, a, a lower rate is going to be better for them. Many times, you know, they might pass this on to the customers, which are our, our students as well. So I think that, you know, as you said, we have not, and I think potentially we should, we want to think about raising these rates potentially more frequently. This is almost, we're coming almost up to ten years at this point since the last rate, rate increase. If you look at the, you know, um, this impact, we thought that this was something that they, they, they could take. So, and again, we put it as a possibility. If you'd rather go to forty-five cents, uh, from the current forty cents up to forty-five, or we were recommending all the way to the fifty cents, but, you know, I, I don't have a specific feedback that I've heard back from these vendors.
So one other question of that, which is it's, um, it's set up as per student hour.
Yeah.
So, so if you have a student who's going to be in the after-school program for three hours, what we're talking about here is a thirty cent increase per day. Right? Uh, if I'm, if I'm thinking about it the right way?
That's right. If it's, if it's over those three hours, so they're going to go from forty cents to fifty. And if it's, if so, ten cents times three hours would be that thirty cent increase. That's right.
And, and, and then over the course of a hundred and eighty or, or so?
Yeah.
Days, it would then be about sixty, sixty dollars per child, assuming three hours.
Correct.
Okay. That, that, that's helpful just in terms of setting the context.
Yeah. And I've looked, I mean, this per student hour rate, I think is a little bit, um, I, I don't, you know, I've looked at different, different places. Do it almost on a square footage basis. Why? They've got different formulas. This has been the formula we've used. And so, uh, we, we, we've stuck with that, with that formula, but there may be other options we could look at. Dr. Nolan's got some good experience with this as well. So, but we stuck with that formula, but we wanted to come to you. The specific request to me was let's, let's take a look at these USB rates. And so that was what I wanted to do.
Well, thank you. So that, that was helpful. I have one other quick question. Am I, so in, in terms of the, the proposed increases for group B and group C? Am I reading it wrong or is the percent calculation just completely off? Like if we're going from two dollars an hour to ten dollars an hour, that's, that's not an eighty percent.
That's not eighty percent. I think what you're seeing is that room fee, that's the lowest. We've got some ranges. I think I was mentioning to you on some of our elementary classrooms. So in some cases, we've got some that may be higher than that. So this range, I think this increase decreases a little bit of an odd number. Um, I don't know if we, we should use that. So that's certainly more than, more than eighty percent. There's multiple times, um, that percent. So we've got, uh, we've got some elementary classrooms with, with, with a variety of rates. So again, our goal was to just basically unify, but I think that the percentage increase is not helpful and not accurate.
Okay. It, it would be good, well, we may vote on this today, but if, if we're not going to, it'd be good to have it be relatively consistent. Because the, the first one would be a four hundred percent increase.
That's right.
Not, not an eighty percent increase.
That's right.
That's right. I'm going to stop. I, I know others will have questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Rajiv. Anping, go ahead.
Oh, Leanne, thank you very much for sharing this information. Uh, very, um, data-driven and a lot of numbers. And certainly, uh, we, none of us can claim that to be an expert on those, uh, you know, hourly rate, for example. Uh, just personally, I went down to Florida to meet, uh, my old friend who happened to be the expert on pricing. Was BU, a school, uh, management professor. He was considered as, as a guru of the pricing. And, you know, all these changes. Uh, but, but quickly, um, I want to be better informed and also probably probably want to know, uh, some difference here. Looking at the, say, daily substitute teacher and long-term substitute teacher. We all know this is a huge concern for many parents to have teachers, you know, absent. And that sometime could be up to the week. That was.
Anping, I think you're on. So we're going to get to that memo next. I'm okay with that. This is, this is, this is the fees. Uh, that's going to be the hourly rates.
Okay.
I think.
Thanks for stopping here. So I.
That's fair, but we can come to that.
Okay, let's look at this, uh, for the, um, for the, uh, uh, use, the public school beauty use, right?
Yes.
Okay. One, one disclaimer, and I was involved in the Chan- Newton Chinese Language School thirty years ago. So my two kids graduated from that school. So I might have a little bit, uh, I, I don't think considered as conference interest, but that was, uh, many years ago. I, I appreciate that, um, the Newton Public School is being very thoughtful about this fee increase. And we all know that, uh, currently financial, uh, challenges, you know, facing our school district. And we need to, um, increase, uh, our revenue. So, so in that sense, I think I, I, I could support this. And also, but I like to say for these Chinese schools, uh, uh, two Chinese schools, one Korean language school. I visit them both. I was involved a little bit, all of them. And, um, they are doing wonderful community service, by the way. As I said, my two kids went through the school for ten years. We can school and learn a lot. Not only Chinese language, but also cultural courses. And by the way, for anybody who does not know, um, the mass course at Newton Chinese Language School is most popular course. The mass courses, all levels, from kindergarten mass to the high school mass, you know, even college kind of mass. Because we have so many parents who are willing to be teachers at language school and there's huge demand. So this is a win-win situation. For public schools to support the language school and for the parents who are willing to support their kids to do the kind of work. So in that sense, it's not purely just business, just some kind of, uh, program who, you know, are doing some of their own thing. This is for community. Uh, even though not all students are Newton, uh, resident families, but, but, uh, significant amount of them. So I want to acknowledge that. One small question. Uh, I noted they're a little bit different in terms of a rate. So I'm wondering, um, if I recall correctly, uh, for the, um, for the Newton Chinese Language School, the rate is eighty eighty-something. Let me see if I can find the number. Okay. Eighty-nine, right? For Korean language school and Cantonese language school, seventy-seven. Just wondering, what's the difference here?
The difference, believe it or not, is one is on a Sunday and one is on a Saturday. So we have a higher rate on Sunday, Anping.
Oh.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
I never know that.
It's a higher rate. Um, that, that's, that's what's been negotiated into our contract, that, uh, Sundays and holidays are a higher rate.
Sunday is a holiday.
Yes.
So high rate?
Yes.
Okay. So if they change to the Saturday, that'll be a low rate?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm glad to know that. So, okay, thank you. And, um, so after we approved and then you will send information to schools. And this will be effective fiscal year of twenty.
FY26. So we wouldn't make any change in this current FY25 through, so through June 30th of this year, no change. So starting, you know, July 1st of 2025, um, that would, that would implement this. And so again, uh, there, there's one chart here that basically looks at, uh, you know, approximately thirty-two hundred to thirty-nine hundred dollars a, a year increase over five years. So we don't do it all at one time. We're slowly increasing this, this rate, um, on, on this, uh, on this rate here. So. That was our, that was our goal.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Anping. Emily?
Hi, Liam. Thank you for the memo and the very comprehensive memo. I may propose this, but I just want to throw it out there. I would personally like to split this into two different votes. One is for the increase in the, uh, usage, this school building usage fees. And the other being the, um, family increase fees. Because I support the incre- the increase of the building fees. I do not support the increase as they stand right now of the user fees. The user fees, I, I believe are onerous and, and we're at the point now where we're getting into crazy dollar figures from a family cap perspective. And I totally understand and appreciate how much work your, your department does, Liam, in terms of approving, I mean, the fact that even ninety-nine percent approval rating is amazing that we were able to allow sixteen percent of the, the population who might not be able to afford it to be able to do it. But these activities are crucial to students. These activities are the kind of after-school activities that actually, some students, like this is the reason why they come to school. Because they want to be in the theater production, because it's very important for them. They love running track. And, and what I don't want to have happen is have even a single family whose kid would, would be dependent on this. That for their mental and social emotional well-being and health, because the numbers are getting nutty. Um, I just like, I'm not comfortable with that and which is why I would not support that increase. But I would for the use of school building fees. I don't know if anybody else agrees with that or if they're, I, I figure I'm in the minority. But, um, I just feel very strongly about fees.
Okay. Tamika?
Not touching that right now. Uh, my comment or questions are, um, a little different. I'm just wondering about, um, and first I appreciate the more rigorous kind of scraping of the landscape to see where in the use of school buildings, um, areas that we can increase revenues. I do have some questions about the seemingly, uh, strategic nature of some of the, um, some of the increases. Because there are some increases that I was expecting that I don't see. Specific to certain categories of, of the rooms. So if we're looking at the elementary cafeteria, middle cafeteria, high school cafeteria, gyms at all three levels. Am I correct in understanding that we are not proposing an increase in those fees?
That's right. So some of those, we, we already at, are already at a, um, what I would say a pretty high rate on some of those spaces already. So we were not proposing rate changes. You see that where I think it's the, the kind of the current room fee. So high school gym, twenty-five bucks an hour. I'm looking at class, you know, group B, uh, and, you know, remaining at twenty-five dollars there as well. Again, those are high usage spaces. We wanted to be mindful of, uh, uh, you know, of the, of the users there. When we had done, and again, it was, it's, it's really is difficult to compare. We had done, tried to do some comparisons with some other communities. It seemed like our rate was already at a relatively high number, particularly for some of our gym and some of our larger spaces. We don't get as much usage for some of our other classroom spaces, but that's right. Some of these, some of these other spaces. We are suggesting though, kind of in the classrooms, you know, group C, you know, auditorium space, um, you know, those are going up. Uh, we got the recommendations to increase the auditorium spaces. Elementary gym for, for group C is going up from two hundred to four hundred. The middle school gym is not. So we've got some variables that we try to look at. It's a little bit.
And, and I see that.
Yeah.
I appreciate the difficulty of, of looking at, um, the landscape in, in our school and in our surrounding communities and finding ourselves at, at just that right, um, that right rate. But when I'm looking at these spaces and I'm thinking about which are the ones that are most used. If we did an analysis of that, I think some of the ones that we've exempted are in fact the spaces that are.
Highly used. That's right.
And coupled with that is the, um, the decision to not address the custodial fees. The memo states that we are not proposing an increase in custodial fees at. The memo states that we are not proposing an increase in custodial fees at any level. With staff turnover at the upper classifications, our average, average rates for custodial overtime generally aligns with our actual rates. There is a lot of variability even within that raise. And I think while that may be true now, that certainly isn't something that's always static, it's going to vary. And so it makes me uncomfortable, quite frankly, that we're raising fees across the board. Or at least that was the, that was the, the initial charge, I think, from myself and several members. And you've attempted to do just that with exceptions, so I, I. I, I don't know if the exceptions for me really make a whole bunch of sense.
I was also asking the same question, and then we looked, we're really high comparatively in those areas, like, really high compared to the rest of the region, so. We, I think we were trying to strike the balance of the places that were lower, we evened it up so that we're more expensive all around. That was, because the rates are just higher than I'm used to seeing, so.
Yeah, and, and you, you hit the nail on the head, Tamika. Some of the areas that we didn't change were areas that we get high usage in and that we looked at. And we were looking, actually, believe it or not, in Dr. Nolan's former district, we looked at some surrounding areas and we were at the high mark there. So we didn't think raising that, particularly on users that we've heard from, and I think I mentioned this last time, we've heard from a lot of users already. They're, you know, they're uncomfortable with these, you know, with rates already, so. Attempted to go and increase that, that was the charge I came back with and, and that's what we tried to do. But happy to take, I'd take another look at this, if that's better, or, or to make it more unified, if, or take a standard, you know, standard increase on, type of thing, if, if that's better.
I, I suppose my point is just, we ought to, we shouldn't be carrying a cost for having an outside program using the schools. We should be covering our costs fully and making a profit, because these are activities that are outside of our. And I think there is room for some type of analysis as to whether a, a modest increase, a modest increase would be something that would drive these programs away or not. I'm not proposing that we do something drastic, but an increase is still additional revenue for the schools. And I appreciate the work, thank you.
So I guess maybe just as a follow-up on that point, Liam, because I know this was part of the discussion, it was in our meeting in Boston, I think, when we, our first meeting in December, when we talked about this. Does the structure now cover our costs, like, just as a?
You know, it's a good question. So we have custodial costs that are beyond this rate, but in terms of covering the cost of the actual event itself, you know, when I talk to David Stickney, it's covering those costs. We have additional costs, overtime costs, that, that, that this does not cover, that are, that are not related to US use of school building. So if that's what we call staff out, so if a staff is out, we have to send somebody unrelated, we have an overtime cost, we've got to send something. If there is a, a, an event, if there's a super cold weekend and we've got to send staff in just to check on a building, we've got overtime costs, we may be associated with that. But in terms of direct costs with the use of school buildings, and again, this is an area that we've really spent a lot of time. Our, the, the facilities team is really trying to, you know, collect a quarter bit of money. We've gone, I think, from almost a seven or eight hundred thousand dollars up to about one point two million dollars in revenue with that. So I believe, and according to David Stickney, we're, we're actually getting basically ninety-nine percent or a hundred percent of the direct costs from the programs that are running. We have an exception with NCE, I have not charged them yet for their use of school building this year. Waiting to see how they do, assuming that, you know, how, how that will work out. But those, those groups that are, that are in that space, they're paying for those custodial charges. If you wanted to get more in-depth, there's utility charges that we're not, that we're not, you know, kind of assessing to them. I think there's, there's wear and tear, potentially maintenance costs. So there's some other, I'm going to call those maybe potentially some indirect costs. Again, these are public facilities and the goal, obviously, of school committees, to have those buildings used. In terms of our direct costs, custodial, custodial costs, they're being met. I think there could be some other indirect costs that you could say, well, those, and, and again, we know we've got maintenance costs. So potentially, one of the takeaways is overtime, we continue to slowly increase these, these rates, not wait six and seven years. Look at the custodial, and I think that was the piece that we would put in there. We didn't want to start charging more than the custo- the, the rate that we're paying out. But potentially, that's something that could be policy decision that we think about as we think about kind of, you know, growing, you know, this use of school building. I've been in some, some districts where that use of school building actually goes towards, eventually can get a pool of money that maybe pays for a repair, pays for some, you know, gym maintenance, things like that. Ours essentially is just basically covering its overtime right now.
Okay. All right. I, I know that was sort of the, that was, that was, no, that, that's fine, that was the, real, really the, I think, outcome of the discussion in my mind was, you know, look, we, we aren't in a position to be subsidizing third parties to come and use our spaces. And, you know, we're obviously working to, you know, provide what we need to provide ourselves. We, we just don't have capacity to, to be in a position of subsidization, but. You know, I think to the extent we're, we're covering the costs, we are putting some meaningful increases in. I mean, I'm comfortable personally moving forward with this. I think it is something we should think about of having just an annual escalator that is part of our policy of how we move forward with this. We have, you know, we're going to pay our custodians more every year, we have other escalating costs every year. I think that's something we should consider when we go through this process for next year, to put a framework in place like that, where, you know, we, we have something automatic built in that will match our escalating costs, which are also automatic. And from there, we can, you know, further refine the analysis of, you know, this space versus that space or, or alike. On Ping?
Yeah, just follow up Chris's question. Here, look at those percentages, for example, elementary, elementary music fees support eleven percent, and middle school activities and drama fees support forty-eight percent. Do we happen to have some historic data to see that percentage remains larger same or increasing or decreasing? Which is concerning, if decreasing, that means our public schools give more money to support these programs. If, if maintain the same percentage, at least we know that catch up with the inflation and all other costs. So do you happen to have data or?
We've got, I've got to go pull some data, we have, as you know, we increased fees back in twenty twenty-four, so I think we've been slowly, we're trying to basically keep pace. As you, as you said, our costs, as, and as Chris was just talking about, our costs continue to go up. I think between our fee collection now in these rising, and, and raising these rates, we're, I think, basically keeping pace with those costs. Again, we're not at a hundred percent, though, on some of these programs, and I don't think that was the intent when, when they came in, to cover the, you know, a hundred percent. Some of these are, you know, student activity costs, athletic costs, transportation. For example, transportation, you know, off the top of my head, you need to be charging thousands of dollars per student if you actually wanted to have that covering full cost of the, of the bus program. But, you know.
So you believe that we keep the pace?
We've been keeping the pace, close to, close to, and but I, I think, you know, as, as, as Chris was talking about, I think this is something where it's, you know, kind of some, some, some nominal increases, I think, every year, keeping pace. Our, our transportation contract is going to go up three, three and a half percent every year. We're going to go out to bid, when we go out to bid, there's typically been higher rates, rate increases as well, so that's been a challenge.
And, and quickly, you said typically seventy-five percent of participants pay the full fee. So about sixteen percent of district's students be approved for financial assistance. So do you think that percentage has changed past few years, more students are paying for financial assistance?
Thank you, so I think that, so we have here, this means approximately sixteen percent of the district students have been approved for financial assistance. I think that that actually has ticked up one percent, so I think that was fifteen percent, so I think we've got a slight uptick in, in families looking for assistance. You know, for probably a variety of reasons, you know, it's potentially the fees, potentially the, the market and the costs of things after COVID as well. So it's been a small intick. We've really tried to put that out there, Julie Athanasatos in our office has really tried to do a lot of outreach for families, try to be really responsive. So that may be out in the community as well, that, you know, if you responded, and PS, they're going to get back to you.
I'm glad to see ninety-nine percent of financial waiver application approved, so almost a hundred percent. That, that's, that's a little bit, you know, relieved to know that if they have financial difficulties, they still have a chance to participate.
That's right.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Owen, did you want to?
I just wanted to ask Liam, because I don't know the answer to this, so I'm going to challenge you just a hair on what you said. Are we keeping pace? Because we are not bringing in revenue to say, do things like replacement tables and chairs and things like that, right? So I guess I'm going to disagree with my colleague and say we are not keeping pace, because we just had to, for example, replace many chairs and tables in the cafeteria at South, and those are used by the rental folks. And I would say any of our schools, you know, typically in other rental programs, there are those types of, now, they, they structure it all differently. Sometimes it's built into an escalating fee as a matter of course. Sometimes it's, hey, everyone who rents this building on the regular, you know, we're, we're going to assess a fee to you for this thing that we're all going to benefit from. We used to have our after-school program as an in-house, so the NCE equivalent. We would assess them, two hundred thousand dollars yearly for the use of all of our facilities, utilities, the custodial, just using the theater lights. So the theater lights themselves are super, super expensive, so when you rent the theater and you get to use all this high-powered equipment that we have, the wear and tear on that, you know, just the bulbs and the lights alone can be upwards of two to three hundred dollars. So I just want to say, I'm not sure we're keeping pace. I, I think that on the day-to-day, just that, you know, we're probably, we may be breaking even, but we're not making a dent in the constant upkeep of the buildings.
I think that, I think that's fair, and I would just say, you know, our capital costs for things from auditorium chairs, leechers, PA systems, the, the amount of equipment, the amount of needs, I mean, and again, we've been fortunate, the city has helped us out in a number, and we've done some PA systems recently. But the needs are there, the needs are there at these buildings, we've, we're replacing Newton South tables, we're doing memorial spalding, auditorium chairs. These are significant costs, again, that we're, we're just, we're trying to basically piece together, but yeah, we don't have a revenue source from these, from these programs, as Dr. Nolan mentioned. So that would be, that would be a great goal, if we had some, you know, identified funding sources from these, that we start, could build up kind of a capital, kind of a capital repair list. Right now, it's coming out of our use of school buildings and in some cases from the city's office as well.
Yep, so I, I mean, I think, when, as we think about this going forward and, and, you know, the potential for escalators and things, we, we want to think about those fully loaded costs, I, I don't think we need to go to the detail of, you know.
Auditorium seats.
The, you know, this group is using two hours of stage light time at the cost of, you know, X cents per bulb per minute, but.
God, you won't make us do that calculation.
Yes, I will not, but, you know. Whole, whole other can of worms. So, yeah, Victor?
Okay, so I was reading through it, I was just looking through it. I'm wondering how exactly you're getting these price raises, these percentages, and if like, this is done talking with people in the community or done with like, community research trends? They seem a bit like random.
And are you in particular talking about the use of school buildings or the, like, the bus fees, things like that?
Like overall with after-school.
So, for example, a lot of the fees we looked at, we put, there's a link, I'm not sure if you took a look at that, so a lot of our kind of, I'm going to call them our standard fees, bus fee. We've got a music performance band, we've got a link to a state database as well as kind of some comparisons. So we took a look at that to see where we stand. And then on the kind of use of school buildings, we took a look at about five or six surrounding communities to see where their use of school buildings, what their rentals stand, and what that looked like, and how, how they're charging. And again, Newton does things just a little bit differently than many of them, so we tried to look at comparative communities. It's difficult to find a comparative community, Victor, that might be a good, good example, you could, you could, you could hear from all of us, you know, how, is it Brookline, is it Waltham, is it, where, where's a good comparative community, to see what would, what are they charging and how are they charging their community and how are they charging their students and families? So at this point, we're kind of, you know, we're, we're trending towards the upper end on our, on our kind of standard list of things. But as our expenses have continued to grow, you know, this is something that we, we need to look at and many, many school districts do as well.
Okay. I'll just say, I, I, in, in terms of the, thinking about this of the building fees versus the student activity fees, I, I hear Emily's point of, you know, and I don't disagree with the importance of these. That said, I mean, it's, we, we face the same issue of, you know, these things cost money, those, those fees do not cover the cost of those activities, whether it's busing, whether it's athletics or theater, you know, any of those things. But, you know, that being said, you know, we, we are a district in search of revenue to meet the, all the needs of our students. And, you know, I think this is one of those things where I know everyone hates them, but it is a necessary evil to keep the, to keep the wheels turning here. That would be my personal view. Tamika?
That is an excellent segue into the part of the conversation that I wanted to touch on, which was student parking fees. I, I'm aware that there has been some interest somewhere in the community as to the disparity between Newton South parking and Newton North's parking rate, student fee. It is a privilege for students to be able to park at or near their school at a certain point in their education. I think it would behoove this committee in this school district to equalize the, as best we can, the rate at which we charge students for that privilege, for exercising that privilege. And while it's true that the city council does control the Newton North municipal and street parking permit application or permit issuance, it is also true that the Newton Public Schools can, and in my opinion, should, implement some type of corollary fee to balance the experience between our Newton South students and our Newton, Newton North students. It is not okay that the students at Newton South are paying two hundred and eight dollars per semester is the new proposed rate, and the students at North are paying, what, fifty dollars?
Six, yeah, six, I believe it's, I think it's a sixty-dollar annual permit, you know, tiger permit drive fee.
So I'm not touching the city council's process at all. I think their process, process should stand separately from ours. I think there is a greater case for some type of administrative assessment on the Newton Public Schools, the high schools part, Newton North's part, to say, this is a privilege and we are going to, we are going to find a way to, uh, charge an additional fee to make it so that students, A, do treat this as a privilege, B, we're trying to drive students to choose bus ridership as a means of reducing the crowding on the streets and sustainability. And so I think there's, it's about time that we, we address that. It's not going to happen here in this memo and I'm okay with that, but I do want to put it out there as something that we, my colleagues and I should be considering.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Fuller?
May I suggest that if you want to discuss raising the Newton North fee, that perhaps a small delegation meet with a small delegation from the city council and the city side just to understand legally who can do what and what the pros and cons are of that. I, I think a, a discussion would be really helpful in order to think, brainstorm together.
Yeah, I remember there was some limitation based on the, the metered fees on, on, yeah, something like that, okay, Barry?
Yeah, I just, I want to say that I agree with Tamika and support that idea. I just want to call out that when we have this conversation, to think about the implications of raising the fee and what it might do to drive kids to park on neighboring streets. As a, I support the idea of raising the fee and making it equal, so I do, but also as a neighbor of Newton South and often seeing high school drivers like, driving like absolute lunatics and parking wherever they want. and often seeing high school drivers like driving like absolute lunatics and parking wherever they want. I, I'm just afraid that if we raise the rate, the result will be, okay, we'll just go park on neighboring streets, then bother those members of the community, then it will fall back to the city to put up signs to say, no, this is two hour parking, this is 30 minute, or whatever it is. So there's, obviously, that's probably not the only larger implication, but it is one that we need to consider.
Thanks. All right. Any other comments on this? Does someone want to put forward a motion on this? Rajiv?
I move that we approve the, the changes to fees as proposed in the memo.
Okay. Motion to approve the fees as set forth in the memo. Is there a second to that? Tamika seconds. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, let's take a vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two is yes. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four? Ward five?
No.
Ward six is absent. Ward seven is vacant. Ward eight?
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller?
Yes.
Okay, Lisa, that passes six to one to, one to one, or I don't know how you say that. What'd you say, six to one? How's that? All right, let's move on then to the hourly rate increases.
Okay, similarly as the fees we had presented back, I think in December, and so this is a, a second read. And there was some discussion to increase some of these hourly rates a little bit more than what we had done. So I've got just basically the simple table, kind of where we had recommended it and some, some revised rate. We work closely with the Student Services Department, Casey No Miller and, and her team, particularly with the E S Y. There was some, there was some real appreciation of trying to get these revised rates up to where they're suggesting here for the, the special education teacher, the peer professionals. They really want to attract and retain some of the staff that they've got in their building. So I think they were, they were excited to hear. There was some appetite to do that. A lot, a number of these programs, as a reminder, are in our operating budget and there's a number of programs. And I try to identify where it's either grant funded or paid out of a revolving account that we've put in here. So with that, I'm, I'll just open it back up, Chris, to, to, to questions. Just wanted to kind of lay that groundwork. That's what we had gone.
Great. So I recall this was be maybe a little less controversial than our student fees. So do we have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Adam Pink.
Well, and I initially, I thought this would be included the first item. So I appreciate that, first of all, daily substitute teacher increased 12.62% increase. You know, otherwise, it sounded ridiculous, pay a whole day at $100 and that probably would not have any really high quality personnel to help to be a substitute teacher. I should have asked this question before, possibly, but Liam or Doc Nolan probably could help. Just, just let us know and the community know what's the difference between these three types of substitute here. Daily substitute teacher, long term substitute teacher, and long term substitute specialized position. Because their pays are significant, significantly different. And so in terms of their responsibilities, duties, just briefly, so people understand better.
Yeah, I could tell. So certainly the daily substitute teacher is somebody that we're coming in and is going to be somebody that's here typically low, less than 90 days. They're substituting for maybe a week or two weeks at a time, and this is the rate. The long term substitute typically kicks in after 90 days and this is the rate that we'd be paying that person. And kind of the substitute specialized position, one, they're a licensed teacher that would be doing that. And they may be in a specialized position, maybe it's a harder to fill position, or maybe in a special, a special education position that, you know, H R department and the principals department assumes this is a needed, this is, this is what we need. So again, this is somebody that's filling in for a long term, more than 90 days. And it's in, I would say, it's, they've got a teacher's license that they're, that they are coming to us with, which is, which is a benefit to us. And it's in a harder to fill position. So, Dr. Nolan, I don't know if you've got enough.
That's well said. So like AP physics teacher goes out and we need a long term sub that has some real skill. Can't just be filled in by a typically licensed teacher, so.
So in that sense, can I guess the daily substitute teacher who paid now $110, probably are not qualified to teach classes?
Yeah, I mean, they may not have a teacher's license. So, yes. Some, some could, but that, that's not a requirement for us in our, in our.
Because otherwise, $100, you know, $110 would not be a good pay if they're teaching classes. So, so long term substitute teachers, they are qualified, mostly they're certified teachers?
I think it ranges, but typically we try to shoot for that. Yes, if it's in more than 90 days, that's, that's our goal, certainly to have a, have a certified teacher in that. They're going to be that length of term.
Okay. And then we talked about for the current school, high school teachers to fill in.
Yeah.
Teaching. So they will be falling into the category of long term substitute, not necessarily.
I think not necessarily. I'd have to go back. The contract spells out, there's some, there's some, some rate differentials that, that the contract spells out. So this is.
That's a per period coverage amount, so by period. So I'm a.
That'll be special deal or not necessarily.
That's not in this, right. It's negotiated in the contract.
That's in the contract. These are, these are, these are positions typically not in, not in, no, not in our contract.
Okay, okay. But still, I, I would say I'm glad to have in, 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 you know, significantly increased, more than 10% increase for those subteachers. And we do need to have high quality teachers, so, thanks.
Mayor Fuller?
Liam, if this is approved tonight, what would you expect the dollar amount to impact the F Y 26 budget?
Good question. So again, as, as, as I mentioned, there's a number of things that's the operating budget and there's a number of things that hit, that are not in that. The biggest impact is actually to, in our, in our E S Y, our student services program. And working with that program, it looks like it's about a $200,000, $225,000 impact, particularly to E S Y for that program. And this is a multiple million dollar program in the summer. And so the increases, and they have been struggling to actually fill some of those positions. So that's the, that's the impact, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
I appreciate that you've provided us with one of the line items.
Yep.
For the entire, if this is approved tonight, what is the total increase?
Total increase is approximately $400,000 for all these. And again, that's not, all of that is not in the operating budget, but that's the, you know.
Does this have to be approved tonight or can this be part of your budget presentation? Is it $400,000 is?
And I guess just back it against, what is the revenue change that we are anticipating with the other memo?
Yeah, that's almost $500,000 with, with all the revenue we've got coming in.
I appreciate we're voting on this on the same night, but there are apples and oranges. So I, 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 I don't, did you mean to link the increases in those to this? I, I think there's lots of things you want to invest in, just.
So it all just depends on how we can develop the other parts of the budget. So knowing this allows us to plan accordingly, not knowing it is an X factor.
So if I take a look through just the number of line items we're talking about here that are operating budget versus MECO grant versus revolving accounts, you know, it looks, you know, kind of two thirds, three quarters. I'm sure there's not perfectly even distribution. But, you know, E S Y is, is all operating budget. That's 200 grand. So we know we're at least there. I'm sure the substitute's a meaningful part of that, particularly given it's a 10, 11, 12% increase. I mean, we're, I assume we're talking on the order probably of something of $300,000 is operating budget piece?
Yeah, I'd say so.
Order of magnitude?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Rajiv?
Just wanted to clarify something. The E S Y changes would take effect for the coming E S Y summer.
Yes, that's right.
And, and that is important because as you said, that there have been challenges with staffing these positions. The other changes, with the, with the exception of the ones affecting summer camps, would be for fiscal year 25, 26.
So all these changes are, I said, recommended, you know, for July 2025. So the, all these would, would be for F Y 26. So some of these positions would actually, so for example, the teachers would not actually, that wouldn't even impact until next September.
Right.
There'd be no impact in this, the school year. Is that, is that your question?
Yes, and, and just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly because I, I do think, number one, it's important to get the E S Y changes in place so that hiring can take place.
They're anxious, they're anxious for that space campus. Yeah, there's a few groups that are, I would say, relatively looking forward to knowing what these, what these rates are for, particularly for the summer programming. So E S Y would be one that.
And they're hiring now.
Yeah, they're hiring now for those ones.
Okay, thank you.
I, I presume, just to follow up on that, that gives us a pretty darn good sense of where the elasticity of demand is in terms of folks showing up to try to fill those positions since we're out hiring for them currently.
Yeah, I've been part of emails saying, I'm looking at other options, what, what, you know, where, when are you deciding?
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly sympathetic to Mayor Fuller's view of, you know, let's know the number. And I don't think this is a, you know, this is not an offset of, you know, we're, we're trading, we're, we're not trading the fees for these fees and, you know, they happen to be at the same time. But I, I mean, at the same time, it's, you know, if we're having trouble filling substitute teacher positions, we're having trouble filling substitute teacher positions, we can't just go without.
Right. I would just put other two, to the context here. A, one, I agree, I, I should have put, my apologies, I should have put kind of what that impact was. Think the backdrop, this is actually, we have not actually approved hourly rates and we actually haven't touched these hourly rates in a number of years. I think we did something back in like 2021. So a lot of these rates have actually been held constant for quite some time. So we've actually lost track. So in fact, we're actually behind the times. But I actually agree with the mayor, I should have probably put, you know, impact E S Y, boom, that type of thing. So I think for next year at this time, this is something new Dr. Nolan had, had done. We had not brought it forward to the committee's attention. I think it's a good practice and we certainly want to keep up with our hourly rates.
Any other questions or comments? Barry, go ahead.
Yeah, just want to call out, how do we, how do we ensure that increased cost to extended school year doesn't mean that we don't offer it less?
One more time, I'm sorry.
If it costs us more?
Yeah.
How do we ensure that we don't just offer it less?
We, we have to offer it. It's like our pricing structure does not negate our responsibility under I D E A for extended school year services.
So it will be mandated by the child's need.
So we'll either do it here or we'll owe families compensatory services. So pay one way or you pay the other.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Barry. Any other questions, comments?
Just quickly add that I think I, now I can understand, you know, it's rational. Let's decide the rate. So when you build a budget, you have better sense. And because these will have to be proved by our school committee. And so when you build a budget, otherwise when you build a budget, you think, oh, we have to raise, then will be more complicated. So I, I, I understand the urgency to have these rates.
So for example, the rates for E S Y will be able to build that into the E S Y budget, which will be F Y 26. So ostensibly that starts in July, obviously. So they'll, they'll, they'll know those rates will build that in. So no. And again, back to your question, no, there would be no, and I mean, they're ready to go with a robust program as they can.
Okay.
But also I appreciate that Barry's point that raise more money does not mean will impact on the, yeah, that, that will be a very bad policy.
It's really the other way, not, you know, from my perspective on some of these, we're, we're, we're having a difficult time finding, finding, you know, the right people. So that's actually the, the real risk from my perspective is, is not finding the right people.
Tamika, did you have?
I just wanted to say thank you for revisiting this memo with recommendations. I think this is far more strategic than the initial go around. Just being very focused on those positions where we do need to increase beyond, I think the initial was 3% across the board or something. It makes more sense that where there, where there are struggles to hire, we need to offer more to attract folks to come and work with us. And I appreciate the mayor's point. I think it's a very valid and good one to remind us that there are budgetary impacts, impacts of these changes. But I think, you know, to the extent that we need to lure and attract folks to some of the harder to fill positions, it's, it's one of those costs of, of doing business that we have to address each year.
You're not going to finish that statement with a motion to approve? Mayor Fuller, go ahead.
I appreciate you're working really hard and a lot of analysis is going on. I'll, I'll still say all of us are feeling the financial pressures that are on the school. So it's really hard to approve things like this without understanding what percent increase for like E S Y. When we approve this, that's going to be an X percent increase. And we know what the budget of N P S can increase and that the lack of context, just because our hearts feel like we need to have higher pay to attract terrific people is important, but not sufficient. So I just encourage a little more data and analysis to help us make these decisions. So it's just it's almost a half million dollar increase without understanding, you know, it, it's just out of context. So I'd encourage more, and I know how hard you're working, your staff is working. So it's not as if you're not busy and doing important work. But that, this, this I find a little hard just to approve based on this analysis. But, so I, I may abstain just because this isn't the quality of analysis I think the school committee needs in order to take these decisions. Thank you.
Yep. And, and I don't disagree, I would have liked to have seen the, the aggregate numbers and, but, you know, I, I do feel comfortable with your representation of, you know, approximately $300,000 to the operating budget. And, you know, it's not like we as a committee are going to sit here and start arguing this increase should be 9% instead of 11% to fulfill, you know, the, our hiring capabilities. So with that, I'll move that we approve the hourly, hourly rates as proposed in Liam's memo.
I will second that motion.
Okay, moved by Chris, seconded by Emily. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay, let's take a vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two is yes. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four? Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six, absent, seven vacant. Ward eight?
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, so Lisa, that is six, yes, six, one, 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 one. Approved by six people. All right, let's move on. We have next a discussion on long range facilities and.
It is the Liam Hurley Show today.
Yeah, but I'm going to share this with Stephanie. So I'm going to, I'm going to have Stephanie.
Special guest star.
Yeah, special guest star. You've heard me speaking up, so I'm going to pass it right over to Stephanie on long range.
Hi, Happy New Year. So we have a long range planning update. The long range planning working group has met a few times this fall. And this is really a, just a. And this is really a just a status of where we are. So as you know, we have four projects going on right now, very active projects about one in construction, one about to go into construction. So that our focus has a lot has been there. We did the elementary school study, the Perkins study. So we still are holding that information, and we're in the middle of doing the study on the secondary school. So R D A is looking at the four middle schools and the two high schools. They've done space utilization, collected that data. We've had initial conversations about the building conditions. And they're looking right now at doing the anal- the space analysis against the M S B A space template for all of those schools. And then, uh, so we'll have a report for you in April. I think we're on the agenda for a draft report. There's, it's a little bit more in depth to dig into because the elementary schools are a little bit more straightforward than the space use of the middle schools and the high schools. In addition, just coincidentally, the M S B A is doing their space, their analysis and survey walkthroughs. They haven't yet started in Newton. But they're doing that over the next six months or so. So we'll also have their updated information. The last time they did it, I think, was twenty sixteen. So that will, you know, when they do their funding analysis, they look at their own data for building condition analysis that they hire a separate consultant to do. So we will have that information. Hopefully, they'll get started in the next couple of months. I don't think we've heard anything recently about them coming yet. But they're scheduled to have that information and report back by the end of twenty twenty five. So it's just nice. We'll have another sort of layer of information. On top of that, kind of out of order from from the memo, the Burdo analysis was also just done, um, building emissions reduction.
Reporting and disclosure.
Right, reduction and disclosure ordinance, which was just passed. So, um, essentially, all building owners who have buildings with twenty thousand square feet or more have to start documenting their emissions and reporting emissions and come up with a plan for reaching net zero by twenty fifty. So an analysis was done by, and I think the the report was posted on the site for you. So, um, the, uh, we're currently in compliance and we're in compliance until twenty forty. The report goes through a bunch of different analyses to look at. There's two different ways to meet the requirement. One is building by building, one is portfolio. So it does a little bit of an analysis of how we need to get there and highlights the first buildings we should be looking at, which, not surprisingly, are the Ed Center, City Hall, Brown, Underwood, Ward, Lincoln Elliott. And so in our C I P discussions, I'm sure we'll be having conversations about kind of what that means in terms of what projects we want to wrap into our long range planning as well. What else? What am I missing? Oh, special education. So we've also had some initial conversations regarding special education programs. Space utilization, that's something that's come out of our, the R D A study as well. And looking at the feeder pattern. So we're starting to fold that information also into the discussions. Enrollment projections are coming, uh, the enrollment report is coming up, obviously, in February. And, um, I think that's, go ahead, go ahead.
The last one I would just mention is the M S B A and thinking about submitting for an S O I. So we will not have the secondary report. Um, I think that's probably going to be in March. I think they've just opened up the M S B A S O I process, statement of interest process. Um, I think our recommendation with the with the long range working group again, but we're open to ideas is to potentially not submit this year. Once we have all this information from the elementary and the secondary from R D A, make our decision of what we want to put in. We can actually apply for more than one. You do need to pick a priority and do that for about this time next year for a statement of interest in in either an elementary or secondary, secondary school for the district.
And key is that we're currently working on the countryside project with, which is an M S B A project. And typically, they don't invite you in for more than one project at a time.
Open that up, yeah.
Any questions from members? Mr. Parlakar.
One thing that was interesting is that the Newton Free Library wasn't on the list of covered buildings.
Covered buildings for which? For Burdo? They're in the process of working on the library.
We're in really good shape with getting to zero emissions on the library.
Great. It's the largest public building I can think of. It it may not be, but I was just surprised not to see it there. The other questioner on Burdo is, when we think of the full portfolio, I'm assuming this is going to be looked at at the citywide level. Obviously, the majority of the buildings are are school buildings, but it's not going to be partitioned out into D P W's portfolio and the school's portfolio and so on.
That's how I read, when I read the report, that's how I read it. It's being considered as one portfolio. It's a city portfolio. Twenty-two buildings or school buildings and then city, city buildings.
To be more specific, the library will be all electric by twenty twenty seven.
Other questions? All right.
One more.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Something. The M S B A's evaluation of facilities, right, as, so they'll they'll send inspectors to walk through our schools and does that report then get published and shared with us? And are there any recommended or required actions coming out of that?
So by understanding the way they've done it is, um, it's a team of consultants, architects and engineers, and they walk through every single building in the state. And they look at all the building systems and the general condition of the building and the space utilization. But I think their walkthroughs happen over a day or two. So they're they're really observations. And then they put together a report. Um, I don't know if we get a chance to see that as a draft before it's published, but eventually it's published and and it's put on their website.
Then based on that report, are we required to to do anything?
No, it's just informational, it, so it helps them. It's, they're hiring one independent consultant, or maybe it's multi- it's actually S T D. So it's one independent consultant that looks at every building with the same pair of eyes. So it allows them to compare, you know, it's instead of one school district able to cry loudest that they need a project, they're looking at the same base information for every building in the in the state.
Got it, thank you.
But the one day a year districts try to make their buildings look really bad.
Just, this was supremely helpful to us in N A D C the last time this went around, and it was good to have that independent investigator sort of lens. Because, of course, there will always be people who will worry over our consultant choice and are we biased and all of the things. So this is the decider on those those projects, and I, we found it helpful.
And again, it's another layer of information for us to consider. And as we look at what building we might or buildings we might want to put forward to the M S B A, that's the data they're looking at from their side as well.
Okay, well, three of us have our hands in this, so we.
Just want to say, the Burdo report said that Brown might agree with the superintendent's assessment of Brown.
And the Ed Center.
All right, thank you very much, Stephanie. Thank you, uh, thank you, Liam. All right, let's move on to policy K B E and revisions and guidelines to policy K D K C D, uh, all of which relates to, um, our parent booster support organizations and gifts and donations. And I assume Jill Murray Grady is.
Nope.
Probably, oh, she's not joining us for this. Okay.
She's in the room, but it's really Amy Mistro who assisted us in the drafting of this policy. She's with us online and, um, Liam as well. Um, and just, uh, I'm going to have Amy just say a couple of words about the development of this, and I'll just give you some background on how I've been interacting with these groups and why this policy is necessary, and then we'll we'll go from there. Go ahead, Amy. Oh, you're muted.
Hey, everybody. Yep. In your packet, you have a memo which explains the rationale for what we're bringing to you for your consideration and update to two policies, one of which includes new guidelines for booster and support organization relationship with the district. The changes are outlined that really follows such that all would follow the guidelines which are included. All support organizations would request recognition by the superintendent initially, and then only as changes in their organization occur. And then all support organizations would submit an annual or applicable time period, say if it was a season, list of fundraising activities for superintendent review to determine that they are not in conflict with the district's educational strategic plan, goals and activities. There is more detail in the guidelines, but the high level in the policy is pretty straightforward. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I did also just, it's included in the memo, but wanted to shout out that we had really great partners when we started to dig into this work, Steve Curly and Ron Mendez with the city, who are everyday great partners and were on this project as well.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I just want to add that I did have a question from one of the members, um, just about like, who are these support organizations? And so this includes all our five oh one C threes, our P T Os, C pack and L pack, although C pack and L pack do not need to be formally recognized by us because they are enacted as formally recognized under mass general law. But this now brings into the light Gelf and N S F and any five oh one C three that fundraises in our name. And bringing those forward, technically, you must take all donations as a school committee, you must accept them. And currently, we have some looseness across those organizations. And Amy's laughing because we've been trying to make this. So I have been at P T Os no less than four times over the last two years going over this very process. The feedback was like, if it isn't written down and enacted in policy, we don't have to follow it. So we're we're putting it in policy, which also allows us to support the these organizations more readily to understand what they're what they're supporting us with, and you can fulfill your legal obligation as a school committee.
That is helpful information because I got the same question. And just so I'm clear, because I might have misunderstood a little bit. The, when it comes to C pack and L pack, I mean, obviously, those are statutorily created organizations. But they are partly subject to this policy, I guess, would be the right way to say it.
Well, they don't typically fundraise for us.
I can speak to C pack. There there is no account there. Um, so it's not a five oh one C three. Essentially, and any kind of fundraising is usually kind of an immediate, we're going to donate a fruit platter for the award ceremony kind of donation. So really not not subject to this. Unfortunately, in a sense, because it it would not be a bad thing for, certainly for the C pack, and I think also the L pack to have, you know, some ability to to raise funds and apply them.
Pardon me, I thought there there was the, um, there had been discussions, I'm thinking about C pack, about creating a friends of C pack.
Right, which 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 would then be subject to this. But the C pack itself would not.
Yeah.
And I guess you wouldn't know with the friends of C, like, would that be a five oh one C three?
Would have to be a five oh one C three.
They would have to, for recognition and et cetera.
That is helpful, thank you. Rajiv, then I'm Ping.
I had a questioner on the, you know, the annual reporting, because this seems to overlap with uh, with at least what the equity uh, reporting requirements were through last year. So are we asking for kind of a separate set of reports on the same numbers?
So we'll be revisiting that policy with our policy committee shortly as well. So we we do not want duplicative reports.
Thank you for recognizing me. Good. Um, I just, uh, there's a difference between organizations that are beholden to the equity policy itself. It's not all the booster organizations. Theater Inc. isn't part of it. Soundstage isn't part.
Elementary schools.
All the, it's it is mostly elementary schools with tracking and middle and high school.
Ping, did you have a question?
Yeah. Just quickly, I remember when I was approached years ago when some student knocked my door, said, would you like to name money to booster? At that time, I was not quite sure whether that's real or fake. Uh, good things at that time, probably not many scams. There were not many scam. But nowadays, if people are not quite sure, you know, anyone could knock door, say, hey, we are collective nation for supporting the, you know, school sports team. So I think that's good things. Now they can say, well, we approved by the school committee. But now the other question is, does that mean we put out our stamp of approval for these organizations? Or do we have duty to audit them? Or we don't care, just prove once? Because they still have to be the five oh three C organization, right? So in that sense, they have other regulations. But still, if we decide to prove them or to be be responsible for the.
The answer is, we're not responsible for auditing them. They have to go through an audit process as a five oh one C three. However, if, for example, as we did experience last year, one of our organizations decides to fundraise for something that is not for the Newton Public Schools or is not in line with our strategic vision, then you would have a duty to reject that proposal.
Are you saying when they decide to do some fundraising, they have to submit the proposal first to school committee? So we review and then prove?
I'm saying that I'll be doing that reviewing for you with our principals so that you don't have to make those judgments. But for example, let's say we decided to, you know, a P T O decided to raise money to send the P T O to Vegas, like, that is not something that we are going to approve, right? So we would just say no to that. Um, so it has to be, the donation has to be accepted by you. So you don't approve the thing, you say yes or no to the donation that they're making, and then I'll have to vet how they got the money.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Can I ask, are we envisioning a, like, blanket, uh, you know, sort of criteria of fundraising activities that we generally are going to allow? Is that something that we will need from the committee? And, you know, a similar thing of these are the things we will accept? And and for the record, can I say, when you said the school committee must accept all donations, what you meant was the school, in order for N P S to accept a donation, the school committee must accept it. Not that the school committee has an obligation to accept any donation that comes forward. Just to be, for the record, to be clear on that language.
I mean, I think it's hard to make an exhaustive list of all things that will ever be approved for a fundraiser, like, right off the top of our our heads. But typically, they're pretty typical each year, the kinds of things they do. I mean, there's not but we've had some weird proposals.
Well, I'm just thinking to to help reduce the administrative burden to say, look, you know, we we are in the business, so to speak, of accepting donations for these purposes. And therefore, it 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 doesn't have to become a onerous process. And, you know, then when someone says, hey, we want to, uh, you know, have some crazy, uh, you know, we want to have a casino night fundraiser to send us to Vegas.
Right, right. I mean, I guess, I guess I would say that I think people generally do a great job with this. If there's something, like, we would weed it out early in. And we're now going to P T O C every month and sharing and training our athletic coaches, our advisors, all of those things on the ins and outs of these fundraisers. So that, you know, to on Ping's point, there's a record of what we are actually doing, and everyone knows that they have to submit it through, uh, for your approval before they can run on it.
Okay. Rajiv?
I'm now thoroughly. I'm now thoroughly confused about this. So my understanding for, for any booster organization or PTO is that the school committee and NPS do not have a say in how they're fundraising. They're independent organizations. They're not affiliated directly with NPS and certainly we are not their oversight mechanism. So if they decide to have a casino night, have at it, we don't get to say whether they should or should not have one. If they decide to spend that money to send leadership to Las Vegas, it's highly questionable. I don't think we get to say anything about that either. If
Yes, we do.
Sorry, let me just, if they provide, if they're going to provide something to us, meaning to NPS, we get to say, yes, we approve it or not. Because I know the trip to Las Vegas is, is absurd and hopefully would never happen. But if they decide to spend money on buying lunch for their committee when they're working on something, do we have to approve that? I didn't think so.
So they, they, they exist in a 501(c)(3) in service to us only. So they must be fundraising for the thing their charter as a 501(c)(3) details. So it depends is the, is the answer, right? So if as a PTO, let's say, organization, one of their charter functions, and Amy, keep me real here if I'm saying this correctly, that one of their charters is that they are building community among parent, among parents. So it would depend on the activity, but sending their PTO board to Las Vegas, we, we would not be able to say, no, you can't do that. But you would say, no, we will not accept the donation, a donation on, on that matter. And their job is not to send their board to a retreat to Las Vegas. So it's, it would depend on the situation.
Again, going with the absurd example here.
I did this to us, but yeah.
Sending their own board to Las Vegas would not be considered a donation to NPS, which is why it could happen without us knowing about it unless we have, unless we're taking on some significant oversight role that we didn't previously have. That's what I'm trying to understand. Are we doing that? Are we taking on a whole level of oversight about here's how you, how you're allowed to fundraise, here are the allowable items you can spend those funds on, et cetera.
So I don't know Jill or Amy, if you want to take a stab at this, but their job is to fundraise around their charter. And if, if it doesn't meet their charter's example of what they are serving, then, then you can't accept it. And we are the five, we are the entity that all the PTOs and support organizations were formed to support.
Back to my previous question, which I don't think has been answered. There is how fundraising takes place and then there is what we as a school committee would accept as a donation to NPS. I think those are two different things, but what I'm hearing here is they are not.
So you, this process asks, asks me to vet that upfront. So we don't have the embarrassing moment of them coming to you and asking you to approve the Vegas trip, approve that donation.
It wouldn't be a donation. But let's, let's not talk about something absurd and let's talk about they, they want to get Dunkin' Donuts for a PTO meeting, which is pretty realistic. Do we have to pre-approve that? It's not a donation. It's not coming to NPS. It is an expenditure by a 501(c)(3) that's focused on serving NPS. If we have to pre-approve it, that, that is a level of oversight that just seems onerous.
You aren't. You're looking at their budget overall. They may have a hospitality line item, a section that is, you know, PTO meetings, supplies, those types of things. If they're buying munchkins, I don't think any of us needs to get into that kind of weed, but it's in service to their, their mission, which is to support parents and teachers in collaborative meetings to serve the school. So that's, that's an easy one to understand. And it asks for the submission of their overall general budget guidelines, just as you do now. They do this now.
I'm sorry, Amy, did you have a something?
If I can jump in, just to reinforce what Anna just said. The granular level of activity that any organization would have, I don't think that we're going to have a lens into as described in these guidelines. To Anna's point, it's a high level overview of their budget for which there will be expenses, which would not fall under either NPS or a school committee purview. What this policy and guidelines does allow for is for the fundraising activities, particularly those that happen on school grounds or during the school day where the district does have a very vested interest in granular oversight for that to happen. From which funds may be raised, fundraised for donation, which then would happen on an individual basis. I don't know if that helps.
Emily, then Tamika. Thanks, Amy.
You had your hand up before I did. Go ahead. Okay. So at the elementary level for PTOs, we're already doing that in some ways. Not necessarily the tracking how the fundraising is going, but all the other stuff that you were talking about, Rajiv, in terms of, you know, how much is teacher appreciation? Okay, we spent X amount of money this year on teacher appreciation versus, you know, buying books to the library, and I mean, and taking the equity guidelines to the side, it, it's just reporting. And, and I think there's also been in the past, at least, a desire and an interest for the secondary PTOs to do that as well. What we've had zero visibility into is things like booster and the, the high school level things. But, but there is, there is definitely some of that that's happening already. The only difference is this is now, you know, can you please tell us what, what your major fundraisers are? But all the other stuff has been happening from the PTO land, at least.
Tamika?
So I, I do see the potential gray area that Rajiv is trying to illustrate. And I think what would help offset that kind of confusion or murkiness around where this policy could extend to, whether intended or otherwise, would be, for me anyway, some real life examples. Like, forget about the crazy examples. Let's talk about practical terms. Where have we seen this arise? What did it look like? And what was the outcome?
Amy, maybe we should coordinate that and share the, the difficulties. I, I don't want to out any particular booster organizations or anything here. So if you let us put that together, I'll bring it back to you for your consideration.
In general.
Yep.
If, if it's too sensitive even for a general kind of
So I'll say to you, the, the pieces that we have contended with are fundraising for organizations that have nothing to do with Newton, nothing to do with schools and nothing to do with students and adults making those decisions independent of principals and just doing it on their own and using NPS as the platform to do those fundraising. Any other general statements you could add? Amy, don't out anybody.
I, I think generally what this provides is a level of transparency, which we do not have now into certainly the donation part. That is a, a real opportunity that this would create to be able to document more holistically, in some cases at all, some of the support that many organizations do provide to the district, which I think is a piece that we're missing right now. And the other thing is to Anna's point, some of the activities that are happening either during the day or concurrently, support that the district has a vested interest in knowing what's happening while kids are present.
I mean, other examples include fundraising and then signing a contract that they were not legally authorized to sign public schools that involve students and their housing. So we have, we have to get our hands around some of these, these pieces.
That's helpful. I, I think my next question is just a matter of process. The school committee does have a policy subcommittee, which right now is just one school committee member. But I believe Jill Marie Grady, our general council's a member of it. Has this revision gone through that process first?
Yes, it has.
But that's it. Thank you.
Yeah. Mayor Fuller?
So I was approached by chance this weekend, Amy, help me out with this one. A member of the community reported to me that an adult, I'll try to be somewhat fair, purported to be raising money for a PTO, except asked for a donation, happened to be for a raffle. Donation was given, donation didn't show up at the raffle. And it got ugly and complicated. Should I talk to you offline?
I'd be happy to follow up with you.
But let's say that's a hypothetical. Somebody says they're raising money for some PTO. And a community member says, wait a minute, what happened to my money? Who did they go to?
Well, right now, we wouldn't even be able to know if there was a raffle being fundraised for, right?
So this gives you a little more insight.
Be able to ask somebody some questions and then say, and know who, which PTO to whom to direct the, what happened to the basket that was donated by such and so. Yeah.
Thanks.
So if, if I meant like the
We'll talk, Amy.
This, you know, as this conversation is going on, and this kind of takes me back all the way to the PTO equity stuff in some ways of if someone is out there and, you know, fraudulently raising money on behalf of NPS, they are fraudulently raising money. If a PTO decides, you know, their, their board's going to go and do something for personal enrichment, that's fraud and embezzlement. Those, those aren't our responsibilities. Like, we're not the police.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, and so we, we sort of, we're skirting this very weird area of, I've always been of the opinion, you've all heard me say it, of like, these are independent 501(c)(3) organizations. I think we should be out of their hair, let them do whatever they do. If they're violating their bylaws, that's sort of their problem, not our problem. And, you know, we will deem to accept their gifts or not accept their gifts. Now, that may be a little too pure of a stance, but it's, I'm, I guess, as this discussion is taking place, I'm, I'm unclear where the lines are. And, you know, I think there, there's certainly certain elements of this that are, you know, there's laws in place that address some of the things we're talking about. You know, if the, if the PTO takes a trip to Vegas for the national PTO conference, I don't know, like, you know, their members who donated to them might be pissed, but like, is it, I don't know, it's, you know, that's their bylaws. Like, does it say they can do that? So it just, it feels like we can get ourselves into a lot of sticky situations that we don't necessarily want to be in. And you know, I don't know, they, I'm, I'm, I guess, I, I, just going through this now, I'm personally realizing I, I need to be more clear of really understanding where these lines are. So I don't know what the best way to proceed forward on that basis is, Anna and Amy. And Barry, I'll, I'll, one second. But maybe can we give that some thought over the, over the coming days of like, kind of how to address some of these concerns floating around?
With some concrete examples of say, if, where we use North Reading as the exemplar for these guidelines and the policy, would it be helpful if we could show some exhibits from some of their meetings? So that you could see in action what this looks like in another district?
That might be helpful.
Okay. We can assemble that for you.
Barry?
Uh, two questions. I'll just ask both and you can answer both. What was, I, I think you kind of mentioned this, but I already forgot what you said, if you did. What was the feedback from, from the PTOs when, like, about this type of process? And then the second question is, have you considered like, maybe instead of the school, like, this structure, maybe a first line of defense of like principals?
So it, it actually does go through that in these, these booster organization guidelines, which things have to come to you versus which things go to the principal first. And it's usually a dollar amount. So like the donut example would never come to you, right? It would, it's like $5,000 or more that, that kind of, of piece would come to you. But we do have groups that are organizing things within schools in the name of PTOs that have never talked to their principal about them. And, I mean, I, I, you look to me to clean these conflicts up, I need a fighting chance. And that's what this, which, this is a very normal booster organization set of guidelines. How this came up was I went to the PTOC with the same attorney general's office training about fundraising and fraud that I've done for PTOs for, you know, decades. And everybody looked at me like I had two heads and said, like, what do you mean? Like, we don't, we don't know anything about conflict of interest law. We don't know any of these things. So I went several times and basically they said, look, just write us a policy so we know what to do. And so this is that policy a year later, trying to, trying to codify, but give as much freedom as possible because I have no interest in curtailing PTO's yummy activities that they, that they mostly do.
So is this inclusive of any feedback they gave?
So this comes from another district and we vetted it with the experiences we had with the PTOC. I sent it to the PTOC about two weeks ago and said, we have a one month, I think, before this comes to a vote at the school committee. I welcome any additional feedback. Now I spoke to Emily this morning. She's not sure that that's reached all the boards yet, but we definitely, you know, it was around the holidays. So I expect, now I'm there on the 28th, so I'm going to ask directly.
Got it.
So what's, what do you think? And see if there are any issues. I can kind of predict though, after four times though, going through that training, like they're, they're speaking like Rajiv, like, don't fence us in at all. But we've had some really what I would characterize as fraudulent and illegal behavior. So I'm simply saying to you, how will we address that then, if we don't have any guidance at all?
Meeting is on the 27th, I think, and meeting PTO council after that.
Yep.
So just from a timing perspective.
Yep. We can certainly hold until that. I mean, we're, nothing's more on fire than it has been. So we can wait. But it just makes it hard because there's sort of no, no guidance for them that they feel is codified. They think it's like I made up the presentation. It's from the AG's office.
I just want to clarify, I, I'm not saying there shouldn't be guidelines. I'm not saying there shouldn't be any clarity. Let me be very clear because I think people might have misunderstood this. Number one, if we take on the responsibility for approving every type of fundraising request, that is going to be onerous. Number two, if we take on the responsibility for approving every kind of fundraising request, that may imply that we are responsible for how it's actually executed and any outcome, accident, anything else related to it. Don't really want that on our laps either. I do think, number three, that we do have the ability to turn down or to disassociate ourselves from an organization that is doing something that is inappropriate, that is fraudulent, that misrepresents NPS or misrepresents them in, in terms of their relationship with NPS. And that's back to where the law is. I don't think there's anything wrong with having a policy. I just want to make sure that this policy isn't then going to require a level of oversight that we don't need to have or that puts us on the hook for anything that may be done illegally, fraudulently, or just stupidly by any fundraising organization. So that's my concern. And I'm not sure that's been addressed.
So it's addressed in the booster and organization support guidelines, which indicates on the first page in the introduction that even though a district may recognize a booster and support group, the district expressly disclaims liability arising from its recognition of the booster. Boosters have to have their own insurance, 501(c)(3)'s to that effect and support group or the group's adherence to the district's regulations. The district is legally separate from a booster and the support organization, and it shall not and the support organization, and it shall not be financially obligated for liabilities that the group incurs. The Newton Public School District recognizes and respects the booster and support organizations are private, operating under the control of their own boards and members. So they have to have their own insurance and things like that. And there is a checklist of best practices included in this, these guidelines for them, which is that they use their organization bylaws and those bylaws require the bonding of any organization member who is a signatory for their own banking purposes, that they provide awards or recognitions in consultation with the principal and the building administrator, that they they conduct fundraising activities whose purpose is to provide resources to the schools and keep accurate and complete records of these fundraising activities, the net receipts of those and a current balance of all monies received and expended. So there's a best practices list that they must adhere to. That sort of, that creates that separation. And legally, we have that nonetheless. So I hope that helps.
Thank you, Aunt Ping.
Yeah, I just like to call attention to this third paragraph of the introduction, just as Doc Nolan just read out. Yeah, the district is legally separate from booster and support organization and shall not financially obligated. I think, you know, that language probably, I I'm I'm pretty happy with that language, but still probably need to kind of spread out. And also the word recognize, probably legally speaking, we need a little bit more definition, recognize that. What what does that mean? You know, we we know that's organization, but do we have the purview to prove all that? What kind, under what kind of legal, you know, uh, uh, charge we can do that? So, but but this is a critical paragraph. And also here on the third page, the second paragraph, the school committee will vote to accept the annual budgets and describe donations of all recognized organizations in the fall of each academic year. So that's, that's also, I think, it's critical sentence here, vote to accept. So but but I I think probably need to spread out, it'd be more vote to accept. What kind of things, if we do not accept, do we need to explain why we do not accept? What kind of things, they get to the weasel of all those things? But I'm glad that, you know, our superintendent would will be the agent of school committee to review those things. But but probably it's good to spread out in policies what kind of responsibility superintendent has. And in case they, you know, those organization charged say, well, you guys over manage our organization now. We have our charter. We know what to do. We will report to the, you know, federal offices or whatever the offices approve these 503(c) status. They have to file any report. So I think those things probably need to spread out clearly. So we understand our responsibility. Superintendent's office understand their responsibilities. And the organization themselves feel comfortable, okay? What kind of things we have to report? So again, I I thought this is a very significant beginning and the start point. And we we do need to have those things in in place. So just in case, you know, something go wrong and we might be liable for for those, you know, occurrences.
Okay, Tamika?
So it occurs to me that there's some logistical issue that we're not addressing. One is, when would this policy, if we, if the school committee were to adopt this policy, when would it be implemented? Because I'm thinking there might be a whole host of subject groups and organizations that don't currently have 501(c)(3) designations. And so is there going to be a lapse of their operations? Are we going to phase this in over time? What is the thinking right now?
So Amy, I don't think that's the case, right? There's, they're mostly 501(c)(3)'s.
Most of the organizations that we're aware of are currently 501(c)(3)'s.
So you don't think that there's anyone within this category? Meaning they're operating, they're fundraising on behalf of the Newton Public Schools who doesn't already have a 501(c)(3) designation?
Can't say that with assurance. That would be part of what we'd find out.
So I think what would be, again, helpful for me and others probably is a list, as exhaustive a list as you can together. Who are the groups? What are they? And in what levels might they, might they currently be in the schools?
We can pull that together.
Yep, thank you. And then it would be a call, I think, to everyone who wasn't. It would, we would deal with those folks, so.
Yep, Emily?
Just quickly, I appreciate that information was sent to PTO council. But there are other organizations. Have they been notified or sent the draft so they can also comment or give feedback as well? So I'm just wondering what's coming out of left field. Someone's saying, we had no idea.
So I think Amy is with NSF tomorrow, is that right? And we are actually doing an audit of all the other groups we think are in this under travel currently, so that conversation will happen as a part of those discussions. But at this point, we're just trying to get to know how those organizations work because it's even more mysterious, some of it's more mysterious than others.
I just think about theater programs.
Actually, yeah, I mean, the the booster clubs are actually, I think, in good shape. We did an athletic audit two years ago, Amy, right? Of the boosters and those finances.
We have not done the boosters. We have dug in very deeply on the athletic programs, not on the boosters. This would be an area where we could address that.
Okay, we have, we've been looking at an overall athletic audit. So I think Pat did an audit of the South boosters. And it it feels, it looks the way I expected to look. So we just need to formalize it. She has an approval process there. We just need to make sure North's is the same.
Okay, so I think we have a couple takeaways from this discussion and then.
And we could even, should you want to, put a time on it to which it would be implemented, right? Like, this is coming, it won't be implemented till X date, if that was more comfortable, based on the scope of what what we bring to you next. Sorry, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, just a quick clarify questions. Accountably, booster organizations or PTOs, when they're using school buildings, do they pay money?
Yes.
If they do not pay money, clearly, we have every control say, well, you use public schools, you know, system to fundraising. But if use money might be a little gray area, some organization, community organization, they 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 do something educational programs. So whether you need to prove or not. But I understand years ago, there are some kind of sports game in Newton North. There's some, you know, famous basketball players join, play basketball with the staff or students. So it's, it's interesting. I didn't know if they paid money or not. But now you're saying they pay the school fee, just like language school, using school building, you pay money?
Correct.
Okay, that that would be an interesting area when, you know, folks could say whether you you should prove. If you prove, give me some money so I can reduce the user fee or that. But again, my point is, we probably need to be more specific and seek some input as folks suggesting.
Okay, thanks. Yes.
Can I just say to Amy and the superintendent, it's really great that you're doing this. And yes, we'll refine and tweak it in a little bit. But this is so important in so many ways, so thank you.
Thanks, Amy. And Liam, you're officially done?
Thanks.
Thank you, Liam. All right, last item we have is an update on the Yonder implementation.
It just is a reminder to those people still watching at home that Yonder is a pouch, cellphone and internet-enabled device pouch that all of our middle schools will be implementing by the end of January. Mayor Fuller helped to facilitate earmark funding from the state so that all four middle schools could follow suit with what was conducted at a middle school last year and continues now. So this is just an implementation to you all to let you know that since we were given notice of the funding, we got in the queue with Yonder. And right before the December break was the time period where they could come to audit all of our remaining schools. They have done so. We are in process for the implementation and the training for each school. We expect that all of the staff, parent and student orientations will be done over the next two weeks and that Yonder pouches everywhere will begin Monday, January 27.
Okay. Yes.
To build on what the superintendent said, I deserve a little bit of credit for reaching out to Senator Cindy Cream. But I want to give her credit. She specifically put an earmark into the state budget for this. So thank you, Senator Cream.
There you go. So to all the sixth, seventh and eighth graders out there who are about to be very unhappy with us, go, go call Senator Cream.
Oh, don't do that to her. Don't do that to her.
And obviously, this follows from the internet-enabled device, personal device policy, whatever we called it, that we passed in the beginning of the year, where we are in a just completely off and away, your cellphone should not be seen or heard during the day at middle school, inside the walls of the school building. And from, I've, I've actually caught up with a couple teachers on this, just so you folks are aware. And I've, I've heard pretty good feedback. And I know we're going to have a a more fulsome review of that in, I don't know, do you have that scheduled?
For which?
The the review of the cellphone policy in the spring.
Said in the spring.
Yeah, in the spring. I I think right after the budget, maybe, or something. Because we want to have time to review that. So if tweaks need to be made, tweaks can be made in advance of in advance of next year. We don't have to have the the cellphone working group meeting over the summer, all summer long. All right, any other questions or comments on Yonder?
Just quick update. Last week, we had the day school visit. Emily and me and Mayor and Doc Nolan, and we mentioned this. I think Emily mentioned this. We didn't have anyone complaining about this, right? No parents said anything next week, so that's a good sign, so.
They they has reached the, yes, yes. As a as a day parent, I can tell you, everyone's, everyone's reached acceptance now.
Well, that's good. So that's.
Which is good, that's what we want. We, that's, that's why we did it.
You don't need to worry that our senator will receive a lot of.
And those, when when those kids get to high school, they will have a little muscle memory, just as we hoped.
Still get some hate mail from the middle schoolers.
All right. That concludes the agenda tonight, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.